...many miles. ...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don't be in order, go call.
Mayor Westergren.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Tom.
Yes.
Holtman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Anyone for public forum? Consent agenda, any additions?
I think Randy will send you up.
You're on the agenda, Randy.
You're on the agenda, Randy. Keep going, he can move it.
Yeah, you're on the agenda.
You're coming up later. Consent agenda, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second? Second. Go call.
Muller?
Yes.
Holtman? Yes. Reese?
Yes.
Stankin? Yes. Tom?
Yes.
Okay, we have going permit for Hartland Truck. Motion to approve that stories building?
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
Go call.
Stankin?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Holtman? Yes. Tom?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna open the public hearing on a proposed sale of the property described as Outlet 20. Rod's on here tonight?
Rod's on and Paul's on, so Paul, you can hear. Your timing's great.
Oh, good, yeah. Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Paul.
Can you start?
Turn my volume off, I can barely hear you guys.
All right.
Okay, that's better.
Okay. Can you just start off with a little project recap, Paul, and really where you're at on this?
Yeah, and then you don't need a little summary of the project itself, or so just an update as far as where we go from here?
Yep, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah. So our intention is, and then I see Rodney's on as well, welcome, we want to get started on a couple things yet this fall. I would assume moving forwards from tonight, the, not only the development agreement, but everything's in place, we can set the closing, we can enter into the purchase contract, etc., and get that taken care of in November. So I've set a meeting with local gentleman to go over the updated site plan and get the work started on what we can accomplish yet this fall. And really, that's gonna be take down the removal of the fence. On another note, if anyone's interested in taking that away and using that, great, it's up for grabs, if not, we'll simply dispose of it. Emalishing the buildings, as we talked of, taking out not all, but certainly a majority of the trees, and bringing in dirt from the VAPCO. And I've got the contact and that set up with the gentleman you gave me, Scott, and doing basically a rough grading. But that's what we know we can get accomplished yet this year before the winter turns much for the worse, and it pushes off the rest of the work and really the bulk of the work until next year when, you know, when we're about to fall and we can start doing things again. So, yeah, that's, I don't know if you want me to go into any more detail, Scott, or if we want to, I mean, I certainly I can take questions, or if you want to point me in a certain direction, we can cover more detail also.
Can you? Can you just go through a little bit about what you're now thinking about construction and what the units would look like, single family versus duplex versus more?
Yeah, absolutely. And I apologize, because I don't know what the group all knows and what they've gone and all, and the discussions we've talked about that have been relating them. So, yeah, so what we settled on now, we're gonna do overall eighteen units. Now, two of those are in town on the one infill lot we were able to purchase. Sixteen of the units will be on the site, Outlet 20, as we now refer to it, on the street. So, we had originally talked about doing a, just duplex, 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 duplex. Rodney and I wanna make it a little more attractive, we wanna make it a little more appealing, we wanna make it feel not like row housing, so to speak, but just the continuation of what we already see in that area. So we're going to do, we believe now, two duplexes. And those would be four rent units, obviously, that's eight. We're gonna do, I believe, then three duplexes, which of course is six more units, that brings us to fourteen, and we're gonna do two single-family residences. So it's now going to be a mix of single-family units, duplexes, and the two fourplexes. That may turn into only one fourplex and another two duplexes, we'll see how it all shakes out when we get the final site plan. But that totals are sixteen units on that site, eighteen units total, broken down into the two bases. So, again, we think, and then what we've seen too, from as far as the site plan and the drawings of these plans, and we're still working on final actual floor plans and such, and I think Rodney and I both have a really good feel and idea for what Lakeview wants to see as far as the style of units, different from what we would see in Iowa City, different from what we would see in Des Moines, but I think what's gonna be very appealing to the people in and around Lakeview. And so that's kind of our plan now, to break it up and make it look aesthetically as pleasing as possible, not only the units themselves, but the site also, with the gradage and the burn and escaping, and what we do with water, what we have to do with the soil for the DNR, etc. I feel, and I think you guys will agree as well, that we've got a lot better projects even than what we had talked about six, nine months ago.
All right, pretty good.
Anybody got any questions for him?
I got a question from Dave. He went through this, are you comfortable with this agreement that we're starting out with?
Yes. Does the public have any input? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Resolution 2140 is authorize you to sell the city property. You have the motion?
I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second.
Go call.
Stankin?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Holtman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
All right, we just sold that piece of property to you, Rod and Paul.
Get my checkbook out.
Okay.
I can.
No, and I have to say, and I'm sure Rodney would agree, we have enjoyed this from minute one, and you guys truly, you know, I worked on a project recently in Adel, and it was a lot of meetings with the city council and back and forth, and matter of fact, one in Urberville, and how, as you can imagine, it is much more difficult. So be truly appreciated when we have, I guess you can call them willing participants and partners, and you guys have made the process both easy and enjoyable for us, so we're really looking forward to it.
All right.
We're looking forward ourselves. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, Kay, do you have something on the parks?
I do. I'm Keely first, for some of you who don't know. Scott asked me to come today to talk to you about what the Legion has come to the park board about adding another flag pole to add the Space Force, which was another military bridge that was added. We talked at our park board meeting that we are okay with going forward, if you're okay with it. They would have to do a little bit of concrete work, we'd have to get a flag and a flag pole put in, and Grant has been a flag pole, or will be soon to, helping for that, and the Legion has also offered to pay for part, or whatever is left over. I think the park board is on board, if you're on board.
Thank you, good.
Yep, thank you.
We have a motion to approve this, so who? Second?
Second.
Go call.
Kay, Holtman?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
What do they plan on doing, is are they gonna wait till spring, or?
Just as a practical matter, it might be a spring.
We haven't got the grant yet. Anyway, we talked about increasing the park board membership from three to five.
I like that.
Let's see what the council thinks.
So just, just the background on that is, so we have a park board as an advisory board, it's a three-member board. There'd been some discussion amongst the board then and the council advisors on that, about the idea of maybe increasing that to, say, a five-member board, consistent with what our other boards are. The park board is also a, really kind of a volunteer labor board, and it just kind of helps to increase the available folks who are there to assist with some projects. As a merit, if the council's interested in that, it would take an ordinance amendment to change that. So, interested in your thoughts?
I was in, you know, I talked to Kaylee earlier, and I was of the opinion that the board needed to be expanded. People work, and it's hard, you know, if you can only get one or two persons there, it's really hard to accomplish anything, and Sandy had put a lot of work into a project, and then, you know. So, like Scott said, this is a volunteer board, a lot of them work, they're not always available, and it's hard to have the meetings sometimes at night when you're talking, you wanna be down there at the park, so I would make a motion that we increase it to five.
We have to instruct Scott to bring it to council meeting and ordinance change.
Oh, is that how we do it? Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's what I'd like to see done.
Second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Go call.
Okay, Thomas?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Holtman?
Yep.
Stankin?
Yes.
So what we'll do is, at the next council meeting, we'll have an ordinance prepared and go through that and see what is really needed to make that change. It's just, I think, just increase the membership, and then there's some provisions about how and when the members are appointed, and we just need to screen out that, but.
Sounds good.
Okay, resolution 2141 is granting a twenty variance to John and Randy Kretcheck, that's been approved by the variance board?
Yeah, so a couple things that they applied for this variance, and really what the variance allows to happen is that they'd be able to build basically three and a half feet further out towards the lake than what the average is of the neighbors. So this thing, the drawings that were on your seat tonight, that is, that's the project. So, you guys wanna talk through that a little bit about what you're thinking on your project?
Basically, we just wanna extend, we're just gonna extend, wanna extend, put a four-season room on, out past our original deck that we have, three foot out, and then we're gonna do a two-story on our house, and we're gonna do an enclosed room up on top, too. Won't be quite as wide as they see in the drawing, as the bottom part of the house, but that's kind of what we're looking to do.
What is your side yard setback, do you know?
I don't know.
The one side's six feet and the one side's four feet, and Eric had approved this building permit then, that can go to two stories without any overhangs on them.
Four feet.
So maybe two story? Is this three?
You're looking at a true two-story?
Two-story, yes, two-story.
Structure.
Did you get any input from the neighbors at all?
Yeah, we did. So we heard from both the neighbors to the southwest, which would be Paul and Lucy Hutton, and then the neighbor also to the north. Now, Hutton's did file an objection to that, they weren't necessarily in favor of this. Lines, my own Sally lines, have the cabin then to the north, they were at the board adjustment meeting, and they were okay with this.
Did they discuss their reasoning for their objection?
Wanted to keep with the average and didn't see a rationale for granting the variance.
Well, it kind of curves, I take it, right around there. I don't have a problem with the variance board, I mean, the variance board decided this, so I'm good with that. The only thing I question is a four-feet side yard setback on a two-story. That's a story and a half.
That, well, that, yeah, so it's, this is what they're saying, that it's four feet right now with two-foot overhang.
Oh, okay. All right, so it will be six feet with no overhang?
That, or, like you're saying, if the second story is narrower, they can do that, too.
So it's their story is narrower.
The neighbors to the north thought they would change their house once they got four, too, so it benefits them because the setbacks have been done.
Well, it doesn't empty, don't. Hutton's?
Doesn't.
There's actually basically a lot between Hutton's and projects.
We have a motion to approve 2141, so who?
Second?
I'll second.
Go call.
Holtman?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Okay, now we have a motion to approve the building permit, so who? Second?
I'll second.
Go call.
Holtman? Reese?
Yes.
Muller?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Here we go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Randy, you're up.
Well, the spring I called with the ICR all about the shipping container, and of course, the pandemic has really put a kabosh on almost everything. His supplier in Omaha doesn't have any forty-foot, and what he has down there are twenties and thirties foot. He won't bring them up, you know, he reprints them out, but he won't bring them up for me to use, and forty-foot, if I wanted one, I'd have to buy it, and it's five thousand dollars. But right now, there's nothing out there.
So we're at a standstill.
So you wanna wait on this, Randy, till spring?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
That'll work.
Thanks.
Let's go. Okay, Crescent Park Drive and Curb Gutter Project, been doing work?
No, I tell you what, we put that out to bid and sent notices to ten contractors just late in the year. So I think we would still propose, we want to do the project, and would try to rebid it over the winter time for a springtime project.
Okay, we'll move on to the property by the maintenance shop. Where?
Okay. Want me up here?
Wherever's comfortable for you.
I'll just sit here. I think everybody knows me.
Yep.
All right, it came to my knowledge that I own property back there by the maintenance shop. You're probably gonna wonder, how come I didn't know this before? Well, I'll tell you what, when we bought all that property, when we bought it from Hanson Silo back forty years ago, we told McCullough Law Firm, when we did the abstracts and everything on this, and some of it abstracted, some of it's quick claim deeds, that we wanted to put into section so we could get rid of a lot of this property, that we didn't need it all. So we give the first hundred fifty feet to the Legion and sold them the building, I don't remember what it was anymore, but then we came along, we kept the middle part, and we give the, we sold part of it to Gene Schulte, that Randy Schmidt now has it, and the rest, but I think at one time or another, I must have given it to the city, but it was all put in two-hundred-foot intervals. Well, unknowns to me that the last two-hundred-foot didn't get included in it. So, that's how I ended up with it. The railroad track, I ended up with that, that's a long story, and I just not even talk. It's mine, you guys want it, I don't have a problem with it. Now you're gonna say, what do I want for the property back there? Well, my first thing was to just give it to the city, and then I started talking to people, and they said, oh, don't be stupid. So I went to Scott and John, and I said, they wanna know what I want for it, they never made me an offer, they hinted around with stuff, right, John?
Yep.
So, and he said, maybe we can give you a big tax write-off on it. Well, that will do me absolutely zero. I told Scott that the other day. That does nothing for me anymore, because everybody gets a twenty-five thousand dollar write-off. So the tax part of it does nothing for me. So now you're gonna wanna know, what do I want for it? Well, I told Scott, asked me a couple times, and I said, I tell you what you do, Scott, you go to every one of the councilmen, and you ask them what they would do if it was their property. So, now I'll leave it in your ballpark. Any of you guys wanna tell me something?
How big a parcel is it?
Pardon?
How big a parcel is it?
Roughly two-hundred by eight-hundred foot. That's just the property behind the maintenance shop. It's probably not exact, but it's close. Now, the railroad track is separate, I don't know what that is. I've got people that want that, too. I don't want it, but I've got people that want it. So, anything else?
Dave, do you have any input?
Yeah, this came to my attention when Vern and Karen came to my office in connection to selling part of this property that we're discussing right now, and in looking at the assessor's website, this entire piece of ground is taxed as one parcel, top to bottom, north to south, and so the Van Memmer's have been paying taxes on it all these many years. And we've just now started to investigate what the title looks like. But from what I've seen so far, Hanson Silo back in the day, and I won't give you the date exactly, but there are probably three to four deeds from the railroad to Hanson Silo, and then there's deeds from some of the property owners of the city sub lot number one that's in there, too. There's fifteen lots in there, and Hanson Silo ended up buying four to five of those, too. So there is a trail there, apparently the assessor's convinced that Hanson Silo, which is Van Memmer's predecessor and title, has title to the property. And then we get to the question of the shed being, at least from the overhead satellite shot that appears to be sitting on this property, so this is going to need some discussion as far as where it is, what it's worth, and can we provide good title, which I think, so far, I haven't seen anything that says we can't on the Van Memmer's side. I would point out, I'm representing both sides here, and that may have to change here at some point. As Vern reminded me, I've been representing him since the nineties or so.
Thirty-some years, Dave, more than that probably, ever since McCullough or Steve Richardson left.
It's been a while.
So, and am I here to, you know, take advantage of the city? Absolutely not. You don't want a fair price for it, I paid tax on it for thirty-some years. So, tell me, I'd like to hear some other councilman, what's it worth?
What's the tax valuation, then?
I have no, on my total property? I have no, somewhere around three thousand, I don't, it was up around six to eight before we started getting rid of a lot of this stuff, when Hanson had it.
There's no way to break down that piece that I saw when I looked at it?
What's that?
There's no way to break down that particular piece at the moment.
Oh, yes, there is.
Because, well, it doesn't show it on Beacon, is what I'm saying.
Oh, yes, it does, Dave.
Well, the entire parcel, it looks like an upside-down L, depending on what direction it's in.
But I mean, they have the whole.
Oh, yeah.
Everything.
The tax, the tax assessment is for the whole parcel, it's not to each segment.
It's not broke down?
No. No, Vicki, it's not. Because we own more than shows on Beacon, too. We own lots, seven, eight, and nine in there also, but that's on a separate deed.
Right.
Right? Part of seven, part of eight, and all of nine.
Yeah.
Right. But that's on a different deed, and that's the other storage shelves that are there.
And what I'd like to do, before we start tossing numbers around, I think this should be a subject of closed session, because...
You absolutely can have it.
Okay, so I think that's what we need to do, because...
But I want, Dave, or Dave, I want it done tonight. I'm sorry, but I want it done tonight, because I've got other offers, not to tell you. I sold my property when I found out with this, wildfire goes crazy, I'll tell you. I started to tell my tenants that have sheds that I sold this property, so they weren't shocked when I, when they found out about it. My storage units are almost all on Euro basis, ninety percent of them are. They all come due in July, but this thing's gonna be settled within a week or two, I can tell you that. So, that's the best thing.
So does your buyer think it's buying that land back there?
Absolutely not, I told him absolutely, he is not, he wants to, yes. He would buy the whole thing if he wanted, if I said yes. Now, I'll tell you another thing, you look at that paper, part of the lumberyard sits on my property. When this is done, I went and talked to Bill Bretherton today. Yesterday, a couple days ago today, he came down, I showed him where it was. If the city ends up with this, Bill Bretherton gets so many feet from his shed over. I didn't sell it to him, I give it to him. I get along with Bill Bretherton excellent, he's done everything, everything I bought to come from wall, like lumber on every building, my house, everything. So, I just want you to know, if you decide the city gets this, Bill gets a certain portion of that, that's showing on his. I think he even cut in a part of his shed, but I told him I don't want it. So, you guys wanna go into closed session on this later, that's fine with me, give me a jingle, and I'll be back.
Yeah, I don't, we can't go into closed session tonight, because we gotta post notice of that in the newspaper, and then...
Well, and hold a special meeting tomorrow night or the next night. I want this done within three or four days, I can tell you that, Dave. I think your wife told me that you sent some stuff over for us?
Yeah, it is.
With James?
Yes.
Right. I mean, that's a done deal, I don't care.
Well...
But I've gotta know, I'm gonna gotta know on this, I'm not gonna let it sit and ride for two, three, four weeks. Absolutely not. If not, if you don't want it, just tell me tonight you don't want it, I'll sell it to somebody else, I don't care.
We want it, we just wanna make sure that we don't offer it too low and you get mad.
I'm not gonna get mad. If it's too low, I'm gonna walk out the door. I can tell you that now, John.
I guarantee it.
I like that part about getting the tax write-off, but doesn't, you know, good. Everybody gets twenty-five to thirty thousand dollar write-off. It's twenty-five now, it'll be thirty next year, or it'll be twenty-eight next year, excuse me.
So we're looking for a number from the council? Or do you wanna wait?
I, I can tell you mine if you want it.
Well, we wanna hear it all.
Okay. I'd like twenty-five thousand for the property with a ten-year buyout. I don't want paid upfront, I want nothing on that property behind the shop at all, I want a ten-year buyout on it.
You just wanna check every year for ten years?
Every, once a year, twice a year, I don't care. On the railroad property, you do what you want with that.
You throw that in?
No, I want five thousand for it. I've been offered on it already, but you do what you want with it, I'm negotiable on that, am I negotiable on the others? Probably not.
So you want the five thousand up front, though you don't want to dizzle around with that, do you?
Right. Well, I don't want... I can tell you what's gonna happen, the city don't want it, I've got somebody that wants part of it, the rest of it is give to the property owners, I don't want it.
I'm more concerned with back at the back.
That's what you all should be concerned with, but that's where I'm at on it.
Twenty-five for that part?
Right. And I know you've got, I'm not too sure that the men's club building isn't on my property, too. I can tell you now, if it is, if you don't buy it, I'll give a certain amount of it, I'll just give it to the men's club, I don't want nothing for it, they can have it, if it's on my property, I'm not positive. We took the fence that was down there all the way when we bought it from Hanson Silo, and included everything back there, and there was a gate back in there, and I know the gate was close to the last quonset. Can I tell you where it was, John? I agree you don't know. But I know it was close to that last quonset that sits there.
In material now?
Right. So, that's where I'm at.
All right, so that, uh, two-hundred feet, and then that includes that high-salt part of that salt house up there, didn't it?
Yep.
That includes that.
Includes that.
Yeah.
But I don't know how far it goes towards the quonset, that's what I'm trying to tell. So you have somebody that's invested in, now, you see this or not? I can see it, I know what you're talking about, absolutely, the back part, no.
But up here, this...
Yes, the front, no, the front part of it. Up here, well, your shelf...
Let me show you, Dan, if I can come up there.
Yeah. So, here's where... That's the city, that's where I'm looking at the city across here. Okay.
Can I do it today?
No. So, so you want us to just provide this to us? Yes, if I want you to buy it all. If you don't want, you buy that, you don't have to buy this. Buy this, you don't have to buy that. You understand? Right, you buy all this back here if you want, not the front part. Don't you run off on it, guy. Well, I'll show you. Sure, I can show Terry too. That's it, but down here, this is where it runs right up against the lumberyards. You guys all following that?
Right along there, yeah.
Yeah.
All right. So, from this point over here, I got to tell me that what's the... Not, not here, because I got to show it this time. So many, James, so many feet of this. Some lumberyards going to get so many feet of that. I'm going to keep enough for the trails over here if you guys want. Can I do anything up here? I didn't want to.
Yeah.
Right, but that's, you do what you want.
So, Vern, this is twenty-five?
That's a twenty-five, right. And I'll tell you this, in a way, you're going to get a road there. I'll tell you why, because you're trying to secure this area. Gets to come back in there, first thing, it's going to run out the back door. They're doing the same thing to my property, kind of fenced it all in. About a little hill for us too, in a slight point. So, that's where it's at. And I'm sorry if I made you make a fast decision on it. I'm not. Council knew about it for at least ten days, two weeks.
I don't think so. I didn't know.
What?
I didn't know about it.
You did. Well, you better talk to Scott and John. Because I guarantee you, they knew about it.
Yeah.
You can say you didn't, Nick, you didn't know about it now, so make your decision. If you didn't know about it ten days ago or a week, ten days ago is when I told Scott and John about it. And I told them to tell every council, so...
Then we get a whole filing Monday. Pardon? We, we get a whole filing Monday after I talk to you on the...
All right. So, I don't know why you didn't know about it, Nicki.
Well, it'd be, I don't know what night you showed me the map. I don't, one night last week.
What would the council like to do?
Well, what is, like, the twenty-five thousand, ten-year buyout, what? Is that interest plus the...
Yeah, like three percent, three percent interest.
Okay.
You can't get three percent anymore.
No, I don't.
I have an amortization run out on the whole thing, so I know where it's at.
How much of a notice do you need for, to get for a closed session? Even if you do close session, then you have to have it on an agenda. You have to have a special company. You're going to come out of closed session to make a, make a decision.
Well, and that's what you want. There's not much for discussion, I don't think.
We didn't discuss it, discuss it right now. I don't have a problem with you.
No, I...
I'm okay with the right-of-way. I don't know about that other one at the back. I, twenty-five thousand seems like a lot to me.
What would you, what would you ask over a year, Nicki?
I don't really know for sure because...
So...
Well, I'm not telling you that you're the wrong price. I'm just saying, as a buyer, I kind of questioned twenty-five thousand for that two-hundred by eight-hundred feet.
That's right.
But I'm all...
How much is every lot in town selling for? I've seen people pay fifty and sixty thousand dollars for a house and tear the house down.
Yeah, that's true.
Is this property worth anymore? I don't know, I can tell you what's going to go there if you don't. It's going to be a storage shed that runs all the way across it. Is it getting to be too many storage sheds? Yeah.
Well, you know...
Why do you think I sold mine? Well...
Well, yeah, that's right.
Well, it's in a, it's in an area that's conducive to storage sheds. I mean, you know, I would say that, I mean, it's kind of a place.
Nicki, it's in the area that's going to have a paved road on it. I tried to get the road paved back to the city when I was on the council. Couldn't get it done. That's a street that absolutely should be one of the first streets considered in this town.
I would definitely agree.
Well, then, I was supposed to do, you know about it now.
Yeah.
And I don't blame you, I tried to get it, not because it was mine, but it's the most traveled street in this town.
Yeah.
Two of us, two, one agreed with me and the other three didn't. So, that's the end of it.
Well, and our salt shed sits right on this ground.
Sits right on there.
I don't, I don't know why we got to, we don't have a lot of choice.
Well, now, you can move everything. You can't move the salt shed, I can tell you that right now. And I think Dave will agree with me. You can move your sand, I don't care. Can you move the salt shed? You can't move anything, you've got a permanent foundation. Right, Dave?
I'll talk to you later.
Well, I'm almost positive on that because I have a lot of, not a lot, I have some farm ground in Minnesota. Anything that was built on it, and then Minnesota law is probably different. Anything that's built on it with a foundation stays on the property. Whether it's a tenant puts it on or no matter who puts it on. Might not be an eye on it.
I don't know, I've just seen them move houses, but I don't know about any particulars.
What it costs us to build that salt shed?
I couldn't, I couldn't tell you, John.
And the council's building another one, one right there.
It's rusting though.
Salt does that to everything.
Well, I know, but shit wouldn't tire with the cement.
Might, might just one little input. Even if you don't build or don't do this with the salt shed, and you want to move it down there by the transformers, that floods.
Floods all the time.
All the time, every year. Soon as it thaws, it'll be need me.
That's why we moved it up there to start with.
Right, so just keep that in mind.
And if you don't do it, that road that goes out by the buy-out can be closed at eye of it. It's a hazard to anybody that tries to go out of it. And it's an exit for all the kids that want to go back in there.
Well, you don't need it now for the, because we don't go to the lagoon or the sewer plant you want.
No. So, it should be closed. I, you know, you do what you want with, you have it, but...
Well, let's make, we either got to buy it or we're going to sell it to somebody else.
That's about the choice. Do what you want.
So, are you negotiable?
Uh, on the trail? Maybe on the trail, on that back there, no. The trail, yes, I would, I would do something on the trail.
What would you do?
What would you do? What'd you give me? I asked, I had you all sat down before. Everybody was supposed to know about it. They were supposed to decide. I'll just say one thing to Vicki, not, not to put it on you, but you say you didn't know about it.
I didn't know about it for ten days, I don't know, you know, last week I...
Well, that's fine, if you knew about it...
But when I asked what the price was, they said they didn't know.
Right.
So, I didn't know about the price till tonight.
No, nobody did. I don't know why? Because once I, I negotiated once before, and I told my wife, I'm not going to get into this. Scott and my son did an excellent thing of drawing up an agreement on my son's trailer park for sewer to go in. Whitey, I talked to you about it, if you remember. That's it, that's all I'm going to say. It was all agreed upon, and I agreed to pay the big amount that I had to do to put a pump in. Came to the meeting and the whole thing blew to hell. Not because of me. Because I was told I couldn't keep that pump if I put that ninety thousand dollar pump in. I couldn't keep it. I had to donate it to the city, and I said, that's fine, I'll donate it to the city, but I'm going to take the serial number of it so it stays there. Oh, no, I can't do that, as far as we'll put wherever we want it. So, now I know what would have happened. That pump would have went down below where there's three pumps going into it, and I'd have got an old pump stuck in there. I know exactly what would have happened. I hired an engineer, I did it all. Engineer told me I could get by for a ten thousand dollar pump. What did I end up? Ninety thousand dollar pump. And I agreed to it until I had to leave it there. So, we spent damn near as much on foot and four brand-new septic lines, pit, lines and pits and everything in. So...
So, are you up for twenty-five thousand and you'll throw in the trail?
Uh, nah, not really, John. I, I, I'll tell you what I'm offered on the trail, two thousand dollars for that front part. So... And I'll tell you what, I've got to, lumberyard, call Bill up if you want to, I don't care. I did not charge him for it, I told him you have it. So, they're going to get so many feet of it, whatever they want. There'll be enough left there for you trails through there. I'll, I'll make sure of that. So...
Don't need a motion from the council to...
I'm all in favor of the, I'm in favor of the trail, or the, you know, the long railroad right-of-way, certainly in favor of that. Um, the other one, I guess, I just think that that's kind of high. That's my opinion, you're the seller, you're going to sell what you want. So, I don't know what the rest of the council feels like, and now we've lost one.
But we got to decide tonight or we're...
Well, you have to, I'm sorry, but you have to.
Yeah, that's fine.
We're getting all this other stuff done, and I'm not going to let this drag on for two weeks, because I know what happens.
So, what was the point of going to closed session?
So, you guys been talking about it.
You could, you're talking more, more about price there, but I mean, the price has all been laid out, and you've, there's very little reason to do that.
I see, okay.
So, it's twenty-seven thousand for the whole works? Right, and so, two thousand, twenty-five, right?
Right. If that's what you want, I don't care.
Now, we need the ground, trail down the road. So, we have a motion to purchase twenty-seven thousand for that and the trail?
And that's a, a ten years?
Ten years, three percent interest, nothing upfront. Nothing upfront, except for the trail. That two thousand I'd like upfront.
Three percent interest, how is that going to be done?
Unpaid balance?
Yeah, well, it'll go off, you run an amortization on it. I've done it, I've done it on farms up in Minnesota, there's nothing. You run an amortization, tells you exactly what you pay every year.
So, we're going to pay a three percent interest? We're paying three percent interest?
On the unpaid balance.
But the, but we're doing the balance as a favor to him, right? I just want to make sure I'm understanding this. I mean, you're the one that wants the ten years, right?
Right, I do not want to pay out. I, it doesn't do me no good. I, I'm going to pay taxes up there. If I take a payout on it, it does me no good. So, do I want to blank check? No, I want it paid out over ten years. The interest, if three percent's too much for you, tell me what you'll give me. I don't think there's nothing wrong with three percent, you can't get it anywhere else.
You're just like a bank though.
What?
You're just like a bank, maybe you'll offer it at two percent.
You have a thing about two. Bank will do it for us, probably.
I don't know.
Well, I think, I think that's kind of, you know, I think we're paying enough on that. I understand that, that's, that's buyer's market there. The thing that concerns me, Jeff, you guys' point with the salt, having problems with that. So, once we have, we have all that property, that we shouldn't have any other issues. Should we own anything that? I'm just trying to...
No, because the low ground's where all the asphalt pile and stuff sits and the transformers. That's the low ground.
Okay.
Vern's ground's where it's higher, so...
And it's all cemented, I can tell you that. City must have did it, I can tell you.
Heck, at the time, we thought we owned it.
Well, time I thought you prayed it too.
Things happen. Are you up, are you up for a motion to do this?
Yeah, I'll make it.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
I'll make sure I got this right. Twenty-five thousand dollars is payable over ten years at three percent interest? Two thousand dollars for the railroad property paid upfront?
I, is that the motion?
Yes, that's the motion. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, before you go a lot further now, lumberyard gets air off of there, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, there'll be enough trail in the middle for your trail. I don't know where it's going to come, Dave and I'll have to do that. So much has got to go to James, and so much has got to go to the lumberyard. And I'm fine with it.
I'm sure Dave will watch our interest as much as you can.
So, if you've got to give to the lumberyard, are we still going to have some right-of-way in there? Or is that whole thing going to stop?
I just said, you're going to have enough for a trail. If you need twenty foot, what do you need?
I don't care.
Twenty feet.
Talk to Dave, what, how much trail, how much you need, and go for it, I don't care.
Well, I just want to make sure that between what you're giving to, to the lumberyard and that building across there, is that where you're giving Hanson ground to?
Well, the one to James that's buying my property, yes.
These two right there, those two?
They'll leave us plenty.
Across from the lumberyard.
I can come up there and show you.
There's probably, what, seventy feet? Fifty?
Oh, and more than that. Phil and I were back there, I stepped it off.
We just need twenty...
Thirty, thirty-one way and thirty steps the other way, is that three foot of step? I don't know what it is, Vicki, I don't, I don't know, I didn't take a tape. We just stepped it off. There will be enough there for your trail, if you need ten or twelve...
It just looks like it's pretty tight up there by the office and then...
Well, they tell me that thing is here, a statement right here, and then it's over late. Is that how they do this?
What's that, oh, this, yeah. This, this could be off.
Right, be off, three, four, five feet one way or the other. I don't know what it is.
Depends where the satellite was when it shot it.
So, all right.
All right, roll call.
Okay, so thank you.
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Mulder?
Yes.
Doms?
Yes.
Thanks, Vern.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll get the other one, Dave will get it drawn up.
Should we check any other city property and make sure we're still on?
No.
That sounds like a paper mess.
Well, it does, but it should be nice to know for sure.
When you go look on Beacon, it says we do, but...
Well, yeah.
I won't have any...
But it doesn't say that. I think, I think all city property have... I think, I think all city property have those.
I do too.
We need a quick one. I don't care. Oh, you're not. What it, okay, abstract was.
Got her all figured out?
Yep.
Okay.
Alright, sweet.
Okay.
I lost Terry for a second.
By the way, we're taking donations for the train at M C E, if you wanna kick it, a couple hundred bucks.
I told you I'd talk to you sometime about that. I have a problem with it.
I wanna get you when you're flush.
I still think you probably have my little train that I had when I was a kid. Maybe you don't, I don't think you do.
I don't think I do.
I asked you about it.
I don't think I do. Probably decide we can get another one and do that. We only got a couple more items left.
Yep, cool.
If we can just sit for a couple of minutes, I think. Which is proof of maintenance region twelve.
Region twelve is the one.
This next one's not a, not a big deal though.
Down?
Yep.
I wanna talk to Dave about this too, we wanna draw that up. If half of the home and public garage is on there.
Yep.
You make sure that you keep it. I'm, I know you will.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah. Yeah, they're, we're not gonna bother them.
I know you won't, I just wanna, I wanna make sure.
Yeah, yeah, we're not. Not one bit. We need them too.
Yes, we do.
You just said bye.
Yeah.
Should've seen the north or something, they had a kid that was an elder, and I had a fork with a man.
No. Yeah. We're building a new house?
No, we're just, we're in. It's down by the lake, where the, the, the actual, they had a lot of.
We need that phone.
They mostly drew the request for maintenance.
Yeah, I guess just a little update on this, we're down to the last of the, of the projects on the housing rehab. So this is for, for technical services, really for, for region twelve. But where they're at is they've, they've left bits and entered contracts on Marley Young, and then the last one is Rebecca Peterson, they've entered contracts on that.
Are you, are you in that new addition?
Got a tune in on that.
Marley, Marley's done, no?
No, no, just. No, I've not started.
I know Michelle, love.
I have a second, I have a second, I'm sure, when you turn on that, when you turn on the street going west, it's a second now.
We need a motion to approve the request. Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Tom?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
We motion to approve the payment.
So move.
Second?
I'll let that go.
Roll call.
Moller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
City administrator report? Just a couple things, uh, on Bobby Carroll's development out there. We do have a, a meeting all, all scheduled as far as firing up that lift station, and that'll, that'll occur on the twenty-sixth now. And it is, it is functioning, and that's just the, the last little, uh, process that's needed on that. And then, they have been out there doing some, some dirt work then about getting the road to grade. And talked to Bobby today and, and had mentioned, he had mentioned then about having them pave the street about the end of next week. Was, was where they were at on that. Hopefully they'll hold on for, um, Sack County Endowment Grants are due on November fifth.
What are we putting in for?
Pickleball wasn't it?
Yeah, we didn't, then, we certainly can apply for a pickleball one, but, uh, there's been, I don't think there's been any new work done on, on the pickleball court.
Well, Sandy wanted to wait till she got done with the bump outs, but, um, I, you know, I do have, I have been talking to her, so maybe could we, maybe if I talk to her, we could still do it?
Yeah, I mean, you still can.
Okay. I'll talk to her tomorrow.
Otherwise, be looking at community center, looking at, uh, might look at this Alat Twenty project, and we'd be able to apply for some assistance, maybe on the detention basins and green base, uh, green infrastructure stuff.
Okay.
Um, then, okay, Northwest Iowa League meeting is this Thursday, it's in Mallard. Progress is promised meeting is on Saturday, the thirtieth, and it's, uh, in the morning, starts at ten thirty, and then we'll grill the last of our pork burgers and hot dogs then for those folks in attendance there.
And it's at the Shelter, not the Legion.
At the Shelter House. So did you guys come up with enough grillers then, Whitey?
Got me, that's.
All we need. Okay. And then, um, the sheet that was here at your table tonight is, is the D N R water sanitary survey. Since we have a little time, it asks Dean to, uh, just run through that a little bit. So, they, they come to do a, a survey and then they give this report, so they're here in January, we got the report today, so.
They're here in, they're here in July.
The last report was two thousand eighteen for the last survey, is what I would see of that. You agreeing with that?
Yes. Um, so, we had just some minor deficiency, if you wanna turn to page eight, it kinda goes through them. Um, eh, nothing real bad, it's just some mesh around, like our drain pipes and stuff need to be a certain size. Uh, you know, instead of having this big square where bugs can get in, we need a little bit smaller mesh, and it can't be corrosive, you know, because of the water. Um, some of our summary, summary of requirements, um, is, talks about that mesh. Um, and these are things that have to be done, no later than November eighth, we are working on them right now, today.
Had you, had you any prior, I mean, you came from water treatment?
Yes.
Had you noticed these deficiencies prior to?
No, I did not go through everything with this plant, no. Um, but then, D N R comes every couple of years to do a sanitary survey, they walk through you, through, um, some of it has said that they had wanted to do this back in two thousand eighteen, and then it still wasn't done. So we are, we worked on putting these screens on today. Um, some of the stuff is, you know, just little, little valves. So they're not like a hose bib, which we do have in there, uh, in the water plant, they want them, they're smooth, instead of having that threads on the outside. It's, uh, so we're, we ordered them today, we're gonna get those on there. The biggest one that I noticed, and it's probably the, is the iWash station. That is something that needs to be done, cause we have chlorine and in there, um, it's not functioning. It's something that really needs, for safety reasons, to be done.
We got a shower in there, don't we?
Yeah.
This is in the big building, you're talking.
This is in the water plant.
Oh.
Yes, yes.
So, I, I'm not sure, I saw that too, but backing up here a little bit. So some of it is paperwork and the required plan.
Yeah.
Um, and then it's this mesh, which you say you're getting done?
Yep.
So then it talks about, um, the filters and the taps, is that what you were just talking about?
That's, that's what I'm referring about the little valves and stuff.
Alright, okay.
Um, and then the filters are, you know, we didn't, don't have any schedule of our filters and stuff to get done, and that's something that she would like to see.
Because she wants to see a sample after each filter?
Well, we do that anyway, but it's just, she wants to see a sampling plan, we, we don't have a plan.
Written plan, an S O P?
Correct, yes, and she wants to see that, and she's very helpful on, you know, giving us the proper paperwork and which way we need to go.
Okay.
Towards it to get it, uh, get it done.
Because we've had trouble before with nitrates.
Mm-hmm.
We don't want any trouble.
Nope.
No, we don't.
Neither do I.
Okay, cause it talks about nitrates.
Yes, and we're doing a manganese every day now, that was something that had to be done, uh, through the D N R. So we're not doing them once a week, we're doing them every day. So it's just another test that we do, the manganese.
So you're gonna implement that?
Yes, we already have, as soon as she mentioned that, that day, from that day forth, we went on it, did it every day.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
What about the water loss, I wanna know a little bit about that.
Uh, we actually haven't had, the water loss would be the, you know, unmetored taps, you know? Um, we just have to go through and figure out where they're at, um, or if we have leaks somewhere, um, they're just trying to figure out, you know.
We're better than we used to be though, years ago we had forty percent loss or something.
Right.
Yeah, it's.
So, it says here that they're, they, they run a formula, do they, to figure out what their percentage is?
Yeah.
There's thirty point five, and so you thought a hydrant might be a problem?
You can have hydrants that are problems, that are leaking underground, that don't come up and you don't know about it. Uh, that way, so you have a company come in, they start listing fire hydrants, they can pinpoint leaks. So you wanna kinda do that, like, maybe once a year, um, just have somebody come in and they can listen. Um, they, they'll, they can pinpoint a leak within a foot. Yeah, the, this.
He's been here before.
They listen.
We usually.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's been here now.
And so if you, if you notice you're losing water, like, the water power's going down, um, but you don't see anything coming up out of the ground, cause it could be hitting the tile or something.
We have a spot out Lakewood that is all pavement. And so, it couldn't come up hardly unless through the cracks. But it just happened, being the water main is right next to a storm drain. We actually had somebody driving by in the spring, where we hadn't had rain or any, you know, any kind of moisture, and heard the water running in that storm sewer, and that's how we knew we had the problem, we had this guy come in, and he was within a foot and a half.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's just, the, these people can hear it, and I've heard it as they're looking for it. And it's just rushing water, and then they pinpoint it.
So when they do that, do they go over the whole town, or how do you, how do you, so you had, you have no way of isolating an area?
Uh, there are issues that I understand that you can't isolate certain areas, um, in town, cause valves don't work. We do have a guy comes in once a year and turns valves and, we, uh.
That's not a fire item, it's sort of a.
No, it's just the, the, the water main valves.
I know what they did. Tides across the street from me, they, they went to five different valves, never did go in the shut off.
Yeah. And they, they may turn, but they have a little screw on it, and then they have like a, like a gate valve. And that goes down, but sometimes that, it breaks on the bottom and it'll just turn, but that just leaves it open. And sometimes it, when you close it, and you pull that, turn that screw out, it'll turn it out, but it won't open. But that's why we do an exercise plan on those valves, so that hopefully they work when we need them.
So what you're saying is you have, you have, or you're gonna have a plan where you're gonna be checking these at intervals?
Yeah, we'll have to hire somebody, you know, once a year to do a water loss, see if we're losing water somewhere. You know, it, it's just good practice, um, so that we're not losing the water.
That's it?
That's it.
Motion to adjourn? I got it. Second?
I'll say it.
Do the adjourn.